Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission, the God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Golden Dale City Council Session for July 15th. Well, all of your pleasure here. We have no serving city council members. Absolutely. And after this roll call, we will swear in our new city council member. Doesn't require a vote. That's what we're doing. Now, Connie, if you would meet with Roberto at the front and swear in.
I state your name.
I, Triduardo Taveros.
Do something, may I swear or affirm?
Do something, may I swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office of council member, position number two.
Yeah. That's a long one. Okay, and...
Did you find it?
Yep, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the, and discharge the duties of the office of council member, position number two, according to the law.
You can read the rest.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I'm gonna take this. I want to welcome Filberto. I think he's gonna be a really good addition to our city council. Very, very community service oriented, and that's a great place to be, it really is. The next item is, we have a public hearing. This is for the six-year street plan. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Are there comments or questions? And from the audience, are there comments or questions on the six-year street plan? If not, we will close the public hearing and go on with the rest of the meeting. Thank you. We need a motion for the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. The agenda and the consent agenda, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item will be a presentation by Dana Peck, the executive director of the Golden Dale Chamber of Commerce, Greater Golden Dale Chamber of Commerce. Dana, it's all yours.
Okay.
Well, I've got the presentation on paper in front of you. For the folks in the audience, I got a paper copy out there. Sometimes it's good to have it on the wall, and sometimes it's more trouble than it's worth, so. I had this working a minute ago, so now that everybody's here, of course, it's not. There we go.
Do you have a light?
It's just like I knew what I was doing. Oh, I think that's okay.
How much am I?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Uh-oh. No, well...
Just a minute.
Want me to back on again?
Yeah. Well, it works for everybody else. I can make this work. I mean, basically, I'm just gonna quickly go through what we talked about in April. This is a reminder. Recent developments, pending topics, and the part that interests me the most are just questions and answers. Again, I'm not gonna read this, but just basically, this is out of the contract between the city and the Chamber of Commerce for what we do. If you wanna take a look at that at your own time, or have any questions about it, no problem. And what we do on an ongoing basis, just had one of these meetings with the city, Mike and Larry, and I were talking about a variety of things at the end of last week. So there's an informal aspect to all of this, where we all keep in touch informally, as well as these sorts of presentations. And I'm pretty active in state and regional efforts. I'm on the McAdmore Board and the Executive Committee, also on the Transportation Board. McAdmore's running all of the bus service on the Oregon side. And it's been real interesting to learn what it takes to make a larger version of Mont Adams Transit work. And I'm real happy to say that we're got all kinds of relationships now with Mont Adams Transit. These signs that you see around town, the yellow signs, that both gets you onto Mont Adams, and they interconnect with the Oregon side counterparts. So you can literally get all the way to Portland on mass transit now. And, you know, you can do that by either calling the Mont Adams office dispatcher, or the dispatcher with, on the other side of the river. And that's kind of preliminary to bring up. But we recently, through McAdmore, did an East Clickatad Transit study. And the two things that we found were, you know, a lot of the people, our neighbors, who are commuting to Roosevelt every day to drive a truck for 10 to 14 hours and then drive home, you know, may be interested in some sort of transit service. And a lot of the vineyard workers that are coming in from Prosser to the eastern end of Clickatad County and Alderdale in that area, appear to have an interest in transit too, if they could figure out a way to get from Prosser to Alderdale. You know, that'd take an enormous amount. There's 500 to 800 people a day that are going from Prosser to Alderdale. If you haven't been out to eastern Clickatad County recently, it's worth the drive, because we're up to almost 18,000 acres of grapes out there. And 15 years ago, there was about five, well over $35 million of investment in running the grape development. And you can't see any of it from 14th. You gotta drive up the hill. So there's a big workforce that's commuting in from the valley. It would be great if we could get that into transit somehow, too. So that's, potentially affects Golden Dale at some time, but it's part of what I'm doing on McAdmore. We've got this bi-state renewable energy zone that promotes a resurgence of renewable energy projects. It's a five-county operation that's been in effect for a long time. Tom Spencer, as a matter of fact, when he was the general manager of the PD, put the effort together. The counties are still meeting. We've got the largest solar farm in the state of Washington's gone in just south of Pickleton, 115 megawatts, which is well over a section. And there's quite a bit of development that's gonna take place outside of town off of Knight Road. Again, not directly related to the city of Golden Dale, but, you know, you'll see a lot of construction workers come through to do that again. And that's just rekindling interest in renewable energy development in the area. Also, if you're wondering where those great big monster turbine blades that you see coming up the hill are going, they're getting put on the 47 turbines that are out at the head of October. Each one of those turbines is getting a new tower segment put in the top, a new Nacelle put up. Each one of those blades is larger than a football field. And they're getting put on the new towers because they can put a lot more, make a lot more energy with them. Got a lot more lights. So that's all part of that. Columbia Gorge Tourism Alliance, we're trying to get Washington State money into the larger group. Washington State didn't have a tourism office for a decade. Now they've got one, but it doesn't have any money. But we're being real supportive of their efforts, and hopefully eventually they'll be supporting ours. So those are the sorts of things that are going on outside the city, but that the city's put into the chamber. Again, our big focus is in increasing local jobs and attracting outside revenue. And we do that, again, through economic development efforts that I'll go through, event creation and marketing, which Nicole is sort of the person that makes us look good in that department. Getting more and more involved with joint marketing of local activities. And other activities as requested. For instance, we did the broadband grant application that the consultant's now doing, and the airport grant application that Gina Moss, who is the real hero on, but she had to have some paper along the way, and we helped the city out with the paper. So what's up now? This is sort of getting past the recap and into the new developments. We had a meeting last week with a national group of investors and their consultants about a proposed smelter site project. It would be enormous. They've asked us not to get into the specifics quite yet, but they're very aggressively developing that site for what would be, not a big employer, it would be a big construction project, but, you know, it would add 100-plus jobs to the area. Possible customer for the pump storage project, because there's a facility that wants to be as green as possible. And they're also talking about funding a large new renewable energy project. So the idea would be that the facility, once constructed, would have 100% green energy between the renewables and the pump storage. And the reason that gets interesting is it gives the big $2 billion pump storage project a name or tenant, and it becomes the Nordstroms of the shopping center, the shopping mall. So it gives them a real leg up in marketing the rest of the capacity of that pump storage project to other utilities or whomever. And it's really a pretty exciting thought of that. I can't wait to talk more about what they've asked us not to say. But it's well over a billion dollar project. And just to put that in perspective, the county tax base with all the wind projects is $3.6 billion. So even without the pump storage project, which is $2 billion, this would be well over another billion in tax base. The direct effect in Golden Dale is, all of a sudden, the hospital bond measure, this for all practical purposes, is getting paid for by somebody else, because they absorb a disproportionate percentage of that cost. And, you know, it has the nice advantage of not bringing in a big new group of people that take all kinds of city infrastructure to support. Other things, we feel real good about Community Days this year.
Yeah.
We lucked out with good weather and a large crowd. We love to say that some of the joint marketing that we did, where we, you know, tried to work with all the groups involved to get the posters and the radio ads and all these things, kind of all talking about it. We haven't really looked to market it in the DOWs very much, but we did some work in the DOWs. Would you mind talking about that just a little bit, or?
Sure. The DOWs Chronicle does a visitor's guide, a gorge visitor's guide, and for the first time this city, through, you know, our work through the chamber, did an ad in the gorge visitor's guide that was specific to Community Days, because that was published in mid-May. So it gave people, and about 80,000 people take a look at that online, and I think there was a 30,000 publish, print, print publish circulation for that publication. And so the city of Golden Dale did an ad, but also many Golden Dale businesses advertised in that visitor's guide for the first time. And so I felt that that probably had a very good impact. And also, the coordination between the chamber and the organizers of Community Days, I felt, went flawlessly. And between print, internet, Google AdWords, radio, we did everything we could.
It paid off.
I think so. It was a well attended.
You never know with marketing, of what you're looking at, and what we're putting for the marketing or something else. But we feel like we did some things differently, and we saw more people show up. Might as well take credit for it, right? So, but, you know, the really good thing has been the collegiality between the different groups. I mean, it's really has paid off. And I know this is supposed to be economic development, not tourism, but a couple of the things I've got in front of you there, and I've got maps anyway over there. The map was county-funded, but we did it with the Mont Adams Chamber of Commerce. One of the things that's really happened over the last few years is, you know, the Golden Dale Chamber and the Mont Adams Chamber just joined at the hip, all kinds of different stuff. And another example of that is on the back page of that Columbia Gorge magazine that I got there, where the two chambers went together on a, it's on the very back page.
Back cover.
Back cover, I should say, is, we went together on a county-wide ad. And, you know, we view tourism a little differently than tourism tourism. We think the more people you get here, the more likely it is to maybe pull in a different business. Just somebody go to Jeep. And my absolute favorite story about that is there's a little town in southern Oregon, southwestern Oregon called Myrtle Creek. There were some guys in LA that were making air processing units for submarines of the space station. And they were fly fishermen, and they were in Myrtle Creek in front of them. They went, why the heck don't we relocate our business to where we fly fish? So you end up having this incredibly high-tech business, you know, in this little tiny rural town. You just never know how that kind of thing is gonna play out.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Especially on this publication that you're looking at, is that they, we spend a lot of time verifying facts, writing copy for the, for the part of this publication that deals with the Golden Dale area and greater Clickatad County. So we provide a lot of information to the publication. In addition, they do, they do a co-op advertising page with Golden Dale businesses. And therefore, Golden Dale businesses can advertise at a much lower rate than they would normally advertise in. So we're trying to get Golden Dale there on the map.
And that'll be a separate one. The Oregon Trail Rally, we had, Lou just did a great job covering it in advance. You know, we had an after-event party at Pete's Pizza that was just packed. I got a red volcano signed by Travis Pastrana, eat your heart out, I'm a little bit proud of him. And, you know, we still didn't get that good a turnout from, you know, I mean, you'd think, given what a motorsports town this is, oh, you got all these kids doing sports, you'd think that people would just show up for an event like this, or just chance to meet Travis Pastrana. You know, if you're over 25 or 30, you probably don't know who he is, but you think we get a... We're gonna figure out what it takes to turn out more local people for this event. You couldn't have had better newspaper coverage than what we got, and that wasn't the key either, so. There's some link to this that we just haven't quite figured yet.
Yeah, we did video.
Yeah, but, but the exciting thing is the organizer continued to be real interested in the area. With any kind of luck, we're gonna get up into the forest land next year, which is their big desire. Going back to the, you never know what's gonna come of bringing in outside interests, a real position that Myland has got on the, the Washington governor is not further than, you know, I mean, leading into this, I'll tell you what that is. We had, you know, a lot of different countries have what's Consular Core Representative in the major cities around the country. And we've been working with their organization in Seattle to bring three or four of these folks down and just introduce them to the area. Again, my joke is always, you're in Seattle, eastern Washington is maybe north bend, but probably isn't a lot. We feel like anytime we can get Seattle folks out to this part of the country, it works to our advantage. And we had a really fun lunch, and we're hoping to follow up on that. Would you like to?
No, I do say, Dana, it worked very well. Again, this is, since I'm on the Association of Wards in general, that's had the opportunity to meet these country councils, and so, and like you said, we hope to do a follow-up and a couple bunches of them.
So we're with this guy, the German consul, who's been a British Boeing aircraft sales rep in Europe for most of his career. At the end of the, spending the whole day with this guy, he just sort of mentions to me that he used to sell planes to Nicky Lauda's company, and he's known Nicky, knew Nicky Lauda for years before he died. I'm like, I could even talk in Formula One with a guy named Nicky Lauda all day long. Fight it out in the last 30 seconds. Oh, well. So that's, those are the kinds of things that you just don't know what's gonna come of them, but it's sure better to do them than not. And Myland's connection with that's made it possible. Home and Garden Shows happened since we last met. We scheduled to avoid a conflict, but to come up with the DOWs. Again, we felt like we got a really good event turnout again. Nicole, last year hit on the idea of having a complimentary dinner for the vendors after the first day of setup. And it turns out that's just a huge hit. You know, it gives folks who could probably go to any number of these kinds of events on a given weekend a reason to come to ours, even though it's probably a smaller market than some of the competition. You know, we just try to make it a real friendly event for these folks, and keep it easy to get into. And, you know, the economic development aspect of it is, I key off of Ron Falter for this thing, and he said this was his best year ever by far. So, you know, those are the kinds of things that make it worthwhile, because you're actually bringing in outside money for local businesses. On the airport, again, we helped, helped with the city write its application. You've probably all heard all of this before, but, you know, you've got the airport committee developing how to spend the slightly over half a million dollars that you got, which is just huge, you know. And the thing about this airport that I don't know how obvious it is to everybody, but most airports have spent their entire life living off the Federal Aviation Administration, which is easier money than if you don't have Federal Aviation Administration money. But it comes with a lot of strings. So if you wanted to do an economic development park on an airport that's been funded by the FAA, good luck. I used to be the county liaison with the DOWs for airport, and it was a huge struggle. This, a huge competitive advantage that this airport has is that it hasn't been getting FAA money over the years. So now that this source of outside funding has popped up, you know, there's certain things that could be done at this airport that couldn't be done at another airport. Hopefully, that'll get a ban for itself as we go. Observatory marketing, that's another, I think, gonna turn out to be, I hope, just a wildly successful effort to bring in astronomy tours into the area. The newest observatory building is way ahead of schedule. And it's just, we were on a, the Parks Commissioners were here, May, whatever it was. And it's really exciting to see these people, who've always kind of viewed this as the stepchild of the state mark system, because it's the only state parks-run observatory in the country. It's completely out of their wheelhouse when it comes to pottery. Just everything they think about when they think about parks normally is different in an observatory. And you could tell that they finally got it. The new building, Troy Carpenter's enthusiasm, you know, talking about the Florida Seattle giving us money to market it. Yeah, that's what it's all about. It was... I think they finally, for the first time probably ever in the place's history, really came to understand what they got. And the new building, you just, it's gonna knock your socks off when you see a new building. This was really something. So just to keep moving along here, the other pending activities, working with Myland to try to get the Department of Commerce Director, Lisa Brown, down here, for just a kind of a general tour. Next on my to-do list is to put together the Golden Dale application to the Dark Skies Association, which, you know, again, was, fortuitously, the Seattle Astronomy Club president was down here. He helped the observatory get it originally, and he's real excited that the community as a whole is gonna go after it. You've heard me talk about federal opportunity zones before, it's in the tax code. You know, if you look at where investment money goes in the United States, it goes to New York, California, and sometimes Massachusetts. And even Illinois doesn't even show up on this. Opportunity zones give investors a reason to take money and put it into distressed census tract areas. And almost the entire county's in an opportunity zone. And it's one of the reasons this solar project is moving ahead the way. This is a renewable energy company that's gonna take advantage of that tax. And the regulations aren't out of Treasury yet, but we're really hoping that in any number of different ways, it's gonna be a real boost to our ability to get people into the area and invest money in developments and housing. The other two concepts that we're working on, and this is Justin Jane's suggestion, we got together a couple weeks ago now, I guess, at Dwell's. Just talked about recruiting people to the community. What's it about Dave? I don't know. Want to go into the kind of the punchline on that, or?
Sure.
I mean, you know, as a non-millennial sitting around the table, I would go flattered open ass. Probably not the best person to recap it, but the, the thing that really came out of the conversation was, when you strip away all of the jargon, if you're trying to recruit millennials, your strongest tool is affordable real estate. And you can't get that in an urban area, period. And I was just listening to a podcast with a guy named Peter Teal, who's the PayPal founder today. And he said exactly the same thing, is that people are starting to realize that they just can't afford to have, to live in an urban area. And the trick is gonna be to figure out how to take advantage of the fact that, you know, although we're two hours away from Portland and three hours plus away from Seattle, that's the driving circle for people that commute. You know, if you've lived in a major metro, well, if you're in Seattle now, and you ask how many people drove in from Ellensburg this morning, almost without exception, there's a couple that are the energy union side of it. And that's the same thing we got with Portland. I think the trick is gonna be to figure out how to market that. And if you remember that video that we did for the dinner that we put on with the FFA a couple of years ago, the just genius videographer that did that for us, and I were gonna get together and talk about it. Okay, if the, if we were gonna make this a focus of our recruitment efforts as part of the economic development effort, and we wanted to create a video that was gonna maybe catch people's attention, who wouldn't otherwise be thinking about Golden Dale as a place to live, whatever it looked like. And this guy's what, 27, 28 maybe? And just, you've seen his stuff, and he's a genius at it. Maybe take a run and see what kind of attention we can get out of something like that. And then the other thing is, we're partnering with local groups, as I mentioned, but, you know, I think that as, as brain-dedding as it is to put together and manage events, and it is brain-dedding, it takes about a month for me to recover from the Home and Garden Show now. It's nice I'm finally old enough that I don't have to blame it on my misspent youth. But the, you know, I think that we really need to dream up a few more weekend events. Something that just gets people coming out here to stay overnight. And I'm hoping that the astronomy tours will turn out to be the success for you there. If anybody's got ideas, a lot of groups that, you know, would come out here for an event, or, if there's anything that came to your mind when I said that, we're real open to suggestion. Because I think that's one of the things that we can do for the larger business community.
Fishing tournaments.
Yeah.
I mean, you see that, and it brings people out, and they spend the night, it goes over the weekend.
Yep, that's the trick.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's, that's kind of the basics of what we've been up to and what we got in mind for the going forward. And if I, if we're missing something, if I can flesh out any of this better than I did, just let me know. And I'm, I think, as everybody in the room knows, we're always open to suggestion. You know, this is, this is, I don't pretend to have any of the, all the answers on this stuff, and I don't think anybody who is interested in it would. So if there's, if there's something we're missing, tell me, and we'll work on that.
Nice to think about events that are easy to plan and execute, that take advantage of something that's already happening in the area. You know, I'll just, Justin, I'm gonna use you as an example, you know, that you started having music on the weekends.
Friday nights, not weekends.
Okay. Friday is a weekend. And food. And so, but that's important, and that draws people. And it's not an organized event, you know, developed by the, you know, city or the chamber. It's private, but it still adds to the culture.
That really makes it special to people coming here, and growing businesses.
And we can, you know, we, just, just the way the chamber can leverage this stuff. Now shut up, like, get out and get to the meeting. What's the guy's name, the city that we were talking about?
Doug.
Doug. You know, we were able to help Doug out with his permit fees. You know, he needed a bunch of money upfront to get permits for this UTV event he's putting on again this year. Probably get reimbursed, but, you know, the chamber was able to do that for him, get him off, off to a stronger start. For the Community Days Beer Garden, by the chamber cosponsoring it, it saved Elena's group 900 bucks. They didn't really have to spend on insurance. So we're learning how to take what the chamber does in marketing and event management and insurance, and extend it to other groups, so hopefully that'll make them all stronger. insurance and extend it to other groups, so hopefully that'll make them all stronger. You know, it's not just a kind of an idle offer to, if we can help, let me know. I mean, I think that although the biggest, the most popular thing we do is we let all the nonprofits that get city money use our photocopier. I think that's probably, I mean, it's gonna be the city paying for it either way. I think that's probably our single most popular activity. But again, it's, you know, in a small town, it just makes it easier for the folks to do their events and put on their shows.
Thank you, Dana.
No, I really, we really appreciate the opportunity to have this relationship. I mean, there's.
I, I think collaboration, whether it's the chamber and the city or business people in the community and the city and chamber, collaboration always brings better quality and more success. And this is a beautiful example. Thanks. All kinds of collaboration, we appreciate it.
Seen a couple of months, hopefully with more information about that smelter site project.
Yeah, that's gonna be exciting. Anybody have any questions or comments that you need to add?
I think it's just great to see how well you guys were able to work with the event committee and our members in making Community Days a success, because this is obviously something we talked about in the event committee about working, having you guys take more active role. And there was some hesitancy about having you guys take over too much, and I think you definitely, in my opinion, proved that you were really successful. So hopefully we'll be able to revisit that when our next event committee.
I think everybody's a lot more comfortable with it now. I mean, we really, really tried to take the idea and make it work.
Yeah, I think sometimes people have the wrong idea that the chamber is this exclusive group that people aren't allowed to be a part of, when, I mean, in a way, everyone in the community is a part of it. It just depends on how active of a role you wanna be and how much of a resource you want to be for you. So I think it's good to encourage people to work with you guys, whether it's just make copies or really brainstorm ideas about how to help the community grow. Thanks, guys.
Well, basically, thanks for the opportunity. Do you have anything else?
I was just gonna dito on that. It's just obvious that when I first came on the council years ago, the relationship with the chamber was almost nil. And this, this is just, it's just reflective of the excellent leadership that we're seeing.
Well, both directions, both directions, but thank you.
And one else. Thank you, Dana, very, very much, as well Nicole.
You know, in front of the most popular thing we've done, at least with the Marquis family, is get that sign back up. So thanks to the Public Works Department for getting that done.
You went just right.
And spurred me my every other month phone call.
Thank you ever so much. The next item will be department reports and loan department heritage. Reggie from the police department.
Well, thanks, Mayor. I have just a few things for tonight, just a few little stats. Right now, for 2019, we're at 1,785 calls for service. Just to give you a little bit of a comparison, in 2018, we had 1,490 calls at the same date. So that means we're 295 calls up from a year ago. So we were seeing a pretty dramatic increase in calls for service. So we started to look why we're seeing so many more calls. And again, most of them are good. It's the suspicious person, the suspicious noise. We get a lot of suspicious person calls through the police department. A lot of times, it's just one person or just a couple people that get called in over and over, but that has drawn some of the calls number up. But the officers are just doing a great job. They're doing a great work on our case reports. Our investigations, I think, are really top-notch right now. And we're seeing that with the convictions that we're seeing through our prosecutors. And I'm talking both our city prosecutors with our misdemeanor, which is Wendell and Brendi, who's doing an amazing job for the police department, and also our county prosecutor, who is David Cannell. And again, we're seeing, most of the cases that we see go to trial, we're seeing convictions on those. So again, I kind of give a lot of credit to the officers and those investigations that they're doing. And another thing with being up 295 calls from last year, we get a lot of backup and cooperation from the Claydak County Sheriff's Office, Washington State Patrol, our Park Service, really anybody who's in the area, our fish and wildlife officers. And that's a relationship that I know I talk about quite a bit, but I don't think it could ever be said enough how much cooperation there is right now between Golden Dale Police and our other law enforcement agencies in our area. For training, I have a couple of things. We have Sergeant Smith and Sergeant Hunziker right now. They're gonna be gone this entire week. They're at a bomb response, first responder training. This goes with our active threat program that we have in the schools. Every year, we usually get at least one or two bomb threats with the police department. Obviously, most of the time, they are false. Every once in a while, it will be something that we have to take action on. And we've had very little training when it comes to bomb response, identification of bombs. We had an opportunity through the federal government to send both of these officers paid there down in New Mexico. The plane tickets, the, everything was paid for by the federal government. And they're willing to send our entire department down there two at a time over the next two years. I was able to talk to both of my sergeants today, and they told me the training's absolutely amazing for just identification. They're blowing things up every day, seeing how much, how big the bomb is, how big of an area, how much to evacuate. There was a big test on Friday, so we have to study every night for that test, but I think this is a very good training. When we do have a bomb call in the city of Golden Dale, we do call out the Washington State Patrol Bomb Squad, who comes here and they help us. And that's a great relationship that we have with them. For Community Days, Community Days, again, with great weather, it was very well attended. The parade was roughly about an hour long. There was a lot of people in the parade. And I want to say thank you to the Golden Dale Fire Department and Public Works, Fire Department, sent out people to help us with traffic control, and of course, Public Works puts out all of the barriers. The directors of the parade did a great job this year. We had no incidents during the parade and holding traffic back for a full hour. That's a little bit of a job. And this year, we had nobody get upset. It was very safe, and I was very happy with the parade. And the same thing goes with Community Days. We only had a few calls. Down at Community Days, a couple threatening calls, just a really minimal calls from years past. So I'd say Community Days was a huge success for law enforcement standpoint. Lastly, we were gonna do a legal update case law training, which I was gonna invite Justin. We postponed that until September, Justin, just because of vacations and some unexpected days, need some time off. So we will be doing our yearly legal update case law here in the next, in September. And lastly, Mayor, I have, I have put about, probably about 40 or 50 hours into our city ordinances. I'm going through them one by one, and with the help of our city prosecutor, who has pointed out some areas where they could be strengthened or increased, especially when we go to trials or we're trying to write a ticket or a citation or an infraction. And right now, I've probably got about 15 or 20 changes. Most of them are very minor, but we, I'll definitely be bringing all that to the ordinance committee here in the next, in the next month or so. So Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you ever so much. I think your police, the Neighborhood Watch Program that the police department established, that's why so many people call, and it's incredible backup for you.
It's a great thing.
Yeah, it's a great success. Thanks, Mr. Thank you. I talked to Noah, our fire chief, and he said the weekend was pretty quiet as far as fire issues and that it was a good weekend for the situation with fires, and that's always a good report. We'll go down to council business, and the first two items will be addressed by Justin. Conroy.
Larry Gollman asked me to come and give a quick update on the South Columbus overlay. Contracts are out to grant, and we're looking right now, it could be the first week of August is probably tentative schedule for them. Again, they do plan on getting it all done in one day, so, except for the striping, so it should be a quick, quick project. Second item was TIB grant applications. And Larry and I had a meeting and reviewed last year's six-year street plan, what you had in public hearing for today. We went through and outlined, or prioritized, I guess, the streets that could be done. And it's really based upon what can be funded by Transportation Improvement Board. That money is all grant money, or 95% of it is, and so it's really good money to get for street projects. And as part of that process, you have to look at how they score the streets for funding, because it takes a certain score to, or below a certain score to get like reconstruction money. Otherwise, if you're above that score, it's kind of a waste of your time to put in for the grant application. But next year, we're looking to put in for West Byers Street. We've got an estimated construction cost of roughly $550,000, and that application will go in in August.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, very much.
Appreciate it. The next item is a report on Osscrete property return. You've got the documentation for that event. And I'll give you the background of what has happened with Osscrete. I think it was something that we probably should have understood from the very beginning, is they put $100,000 to buy all the, they bought the two lots, but that took most of their available cash, depending on what luck they were having with different investors. So they asked, we worked with them to give them back the 90,000, they've written, and that's what the agreement was. And the city kept the 10,000 that's been used to cover all the administrative costs and other things associated with that. But they've rented a building down at the smelter site, still in the Golden Dale area, and their intention is to come back in a couple of years. But they're setting up right now, they're setting up their tables, ordering the new equipment that will help them to actually produce the panels that they build the houses with. So I think we'll see a good bit more action from them and success. And I really hope that this is gonna work out for them, but they, they just changed their strategy, but I think it's gonna work for them. You know, this is, it's just a report, but there will be a check prepared minus the property tax of their money handed to go back to and resolve it. Ready, ready to go. So that's done. Any questions or comments on the report, though? Okay, good. We'll go on to item H on the agenda, resolutions. And this is the six-year street plan. So you get more detail on that particular item through this particular document. And this one, this one's already presented, so we'll need a motion to adopt the resolution now on adopting the six-year street plan. This is, this lays out what we're gonna be doing. Of course, very often, events happen and it changes, but that has to be in there.
I move to adopt resolution number 699, adopting a six-year transportation improvement program for city streets pursuant to RCW 35 dot 77 dot 010 dot.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution 9699, adopting the six-year transportation improvement program for city streets. This is pursuant to the RCW applicable to that topic. Any discussion or any questions, any comments?
If that grant doesn't come through from TIB for Byers, what's gonna happen with Byers next, next year? I see it slated for next year. Reconstruct it.
And if, if for some reason we don't get that grant, we have a very, very good track record with TIB.
Okay.
And that, we're hoping that will do it, but if not, we'll be up chasing another grant.
Okay.
That's our only choice.
Byers is bad.
Yeah, I go with Byers quite a bit, going to the airport and.
Yeah, I was just wondering, are they ever gonna fill any of those potholes they fill with gravel and then scrub empty next week?
We'll have to see. Should be coming, should be coming. Thank you.
That's all.
Any other question? On this six-year street plan, I know this is more resurfacing, however, does this ensure a plan to stripe all the existing streets, crosswalks, and street signs?
That will be done fairly soon this year. It's scheduled also for this year. It's an annual thing on the striping on the streets. It didn't get done this year mostly because of the disruption with events as well as with missing our director.
Okay. I'd like to see a plan from Public Works and how they plan to catch all that up. That was great.
Good, I think they can do that. Very good. I know they can do that. Thank you. Well, I have the report, the officers and the city administrator.
We got the motion, got the second.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. It happens all the time.
Get the motion, get the second.
I did get the motion. Oh, I.
Were you discussing?
Yes. All in favor of this motion?
I.
Any questions or discussions or objections? If not, motion passes. Thank you. Appreciate the reminder, too. The next item is a report of officers and the city administrator, and Larry's out of the state right now, so we will be hearing from him at the next city council meeting, and he'll be back middle of this week. Let's start with Justin and go around with.
Sure, just wanna thank the chamber again for their presentation. Whether or not the marketing did this or not, though, Community Days was definitely a success. From other people that I've talked to, they said there was more people in town than they had seen in a long time. And we were definitely busy. So whatever it was, everything seemed to converge in a really positive way for the community, so looking forward to, you know, more years like that, that would be great. And it's a bummer that the Osscrete's not gonna work out at the property here in the city, but it's, I'm still positive that, you know, when they do get around to hiring people, that there'll still be Golden Dale jobs.
It will.
And that's gonna be so close, so we'll just have to wait and see. And if anyone else wants to buy land in the industrial park, there's a few lots for sale.
There's a number more than that.
Yeah, that's, that's all I got.
Good, thanks, Justin. Jane?
I just also wanted to thank Dana for the presentation and for all the, all the good work that he is doing to, you know, get our, get our cute little hamlet some notice regionally and statewide. And I wanted to welcome Philerito to council, and I'm no longer the newbie, so that's all you. Congratulations.
Go ahead.
Same thing, Dana, great job. And let's just keep it up, and next year, let's even do better. And I attended several days there to the Community Days, and I was pretty impressed with what was going on. Man, the food selections was outrageous, it was great. And the rock wall, that was definitely a big hit, and I was glad that Larry was able to link up with the gentleman we saw down at the auto show here and get that in there. The, so overall, it was great and just let's work together. And come back to, with any incident or event that you put on, it's always good to have a hot wash afterwards. And that's my question, when are we gonna have that? It's always good to do it quickly after the incident or the event to figure out what was good and what was bad. And so you get, get rid of the bad and improve on the good. So we need to have one of those with the event committee or whatever.
Okay, we can, we can schedule the time.
Next meet, before next meeting, or you wanna wait for Larry to get back?
Oh, he'll be back tomorrow.
We can do the fifth before the next meeting.
That'd be fine. Let's say 18, just tell Larry 1800 on the fifth, be here, we'll do a hot wash and get all the participants of August.
Oh, okay.
I know this, that's almost a month after it.
There's a time for August, yeah.
So, but let's, let's get this done and bring in our thinking caps, what was good, what was bad, and let's try to improve on that next year. Also, on the 19th, this Friday, CNC Auto, which you remember bought one of our warehouses out there and has vastly improved, they're up to four total workers there now from one, so they've basically quadrupled their workforce, which means we have three extra workers here in this town. Is having a Cruze Inn and Podlock on the evening of the 19th, so contact Mariah Warner or Craig, and I don't wanna say Butcher's last name, but so, there you go. Need to say, for more information, but it's gonna be Friday, late, late afternoon, early evening, so, and bring your hot rods out. I know you have one, don't you, Greg?
Not a hot rod.
Can I bring my four-wheeler?
There you go, you can bring whatever you drive. So it's, he's just opening up his doors and basically wants people to come, Cruze's gonna have a good time. So it's a Cruze Inn, we're not gonna be Cruzeen, but Cruze Inn. So that's about it, and welcome aboard.
Shannon?
I wanna say welcome. And thank you, Dana and crew, you had an awesome job. And to Reggie's crew, you normally have, what, two officers on at a time?
We, we try to have two on both vacations.
We, we try to have two on, but with vacations and training, a lot of times, especially in the summertime, we have one, but we try to have two on.
So, think about it, everybody looks at Goldendale as a little town, but two, just two officers or maybe even just one driving around Goldendale, we are the eyes and the ears for the police department, and you may not get along with your neighbor, but if you see something suspicious going on, you should still have their back, and don't be afraid to call, because that's how we're gonna keep crying down a little bit.
That's good. It's very effective, really. Even at Chain, Andy?
Guess I'm kinda echoing everyone, welcome aboard.
First, what have you said you want to add?
I just wanna say, thanks for having me, I'm pretty excited, I'm excited about the Chamber, I'm working on a lot of ideas on other realms, so sure have been talking with Dana, and I'm very passionate about public service, that's why I'm here, and hopefully I can bring everything that I'm passionate with and combine it, and we'll see what happens.
Welcome, I'm really glad you're here.
Yeah, hi Mayor, I just wanna also mention that, you know, the Chamber and the city is working on a lot of great projects, and will continue to be working on a lot of great projects this summer and this fall, and also wanna welcome my new council member, welcome aboard, so anyway, that's what I had.
Okay, on the mayor's side, just comments, when Larry and I were in Spokane, and Miley was there, there was all sorts of discussion, you have people from all over the state there, and I don't know how many different times I talked to mayors, and they said, oh, you're from Goldendale. I either have been to Goldendale, I go through both Goldendale, I have a relative or a friend in Goldendale, I heard not one positive remark, and nobody said, where is Goldendale? It's a kind of, that's, that's changed, it really has changed. And so that was, so then I thought it was very positive, we're delighted to have Filberto on the team, he's so oriented to community events and the service in the community, I think we're gonna enjoy working with you very much. And the last thing, everybody is anxious to know what's happening with the Public Works Department, the selection of a director, and the changes that that's gonna bring, we should have all the details for you at the next Chamber meeting. It's, a lot of it has to be done before then, an executive session and things of that nature, but the elections are made, everything is in place, so it's, it's gonna happen, but it can't be announced yet, because there's a lot of moving parts. Next item is public comments. Anybody here for public comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, Wayne Kent, 321 West Byers. In a relationship to Osscrete, I was curious to see how that was developed, and I remember back, whenever they signed contractor, discussions ongoing, that the council were pretty enthused about the 100,000 that was being paid for, and I remember something about the 100,000 being used to pay off some debt, I don't know, can't remember exactly the guy, but there was, or Mike, there was some debt that we very pleased to be able to relieve ourselves with 100,000. Well, now, obviously, that 100,000 is disappearing, and the 10 grand, I wonder, my memory doesn't serve me well, is what that was exactly, but when is the status of that situation now?
The paying the money back has been covered within the budget, but the, well, the 100,000 dollars was used as almost the entire payment to pay off the industrial park itself. We'd gotten a curb loan a number of years ago, and curb loans had a lot of different strings on them, which made things a little bit more complicated, but we were able to clear that debt, and so that's quite a different asset now for the city. But there were other funds allocated to cover that in case we had to give it back, and so it's, we're in good shape.
From the city budget somehow or another, the 9,000 came from where?
Well, I don't have the specifics, but from two or three pots within the budget where that can be used for this type of situation. We couldn't promise paying it back unless we had it covered in the budget to start with. That was long enough ago, I probably haven't remembered all the pots that were.
Why did we promise to pay it back?
Because we were, we wanted to make sure what they were buying and what their plan was was gonna happen, and that wasn't happening in that schedule at all, and they were getting frustrated and worried, and we were getting a bit nervous about it. But with that money back, they're able to rent a place, get their building equipment actually functioning, and start selling houses, and I think that's gonna get them over the hump.
And they're doing that down at the old?
The very last building at the aluminum site, and their, their intentions are to come back to the industrial park as soon as they get back to buy the, either those lots or other lots.
Okay, I see, all right, thank you. Can I ask one question of Dana, or is that?
No, that's absolutely fine.
I was curious about the smelter.
Dana, if you're gonna answer, I want you up here.
You can't blame a guy for trying.
What's that? I can wait till later.
No, that's fine, I just want you two together instead of.
Oh, sure. I was just curious about the smelter, because I hadn't heard of that, and what, what that is, what's involved here in the smelter?
We'll have a colic where.
Right. What's involved in the, in the smelter?
The owner of the smelter site is a company called NSC, they bought both smelters and the DOWs and this one, and basically demolished them, and have been doing site redevelopment and finding potential customers to do large-scale developments on both projects.
Those developments are smelting?
No, no.
Oh.
I mean, those, you know, I don't even down there, but it's gone.
Not long ago, yeah.
And in the case of the, their site in the DOWs, they've sold the entire property to Google.
Oh, I get you, I see what you're saying.
And they've got a term sheet signed to develop the one on this side of the river, but they're reluctant to talk about who it's with yet, because it's, they need to get a little farther along, but they're, the potential developer is spending money on site assessment and environmental studies, so it's.
Right, down at the site where Osscrete is looking?
Well, you know, the only remaining building down there is the last building, the Goldendale Aluminum Build, which was gonna be used for storage of like recast aluminum, it's a great, it's a big building, it didn't seem big at the time, but now that it's the only one down there, it's big. I assume that's the one they're using, because they only went down there.
That's exactly what they need for powder, it's one less for space.
But the, the Osscrete, you know, they'd fit in the corner of this other development that's being talked about, so there's no, there's no competitive problem there, if that's the nature of your question.
No, actually, the nature, just what the development was, we'd been saying about, I wasn't sure if it was a smelting thing or something.
No, no, it's, yeah, it's.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure. Thank you. One else for public comment. Terry?
Terry, this is 108 in Hart Jackfield. Mike, I'm not sure that everybody really knows how many hours are being put in trying to get this airport up and going and the different problems we're running into, and how much tie-in everybody's done, how much Dana works on things like that, you know, people don't realize, there's probably 40, 50 hours a week spent doing things on that airport.
Collectively, I think.
Yeah, you know, and it just, it's a major project that can tie into everything else that we're talking about, down at the smelter site, up on doing the morgue rapes, the big pump storage project, a lot of people don't wanna come to town until we can have an airport really for them, it's been one of their checks on their lists, and people just, you know, and people really don't realize how much our airport gets used today as it is, between military flights and everything else, because the flight plans don't go over the city, they actually skirt to the whole north of it, and when they're under power taken off, they actually are sending all the noise basically out over the wheat fields and everything.
Well-located airport with just the right features.
Where exactly 180% or 180-degree turnaround from what the DOWs airport is, you know, on takeoff and landing conditions, we're not in the way of everything, people just don't realize it, and I know there's a lot of council members put in a lot of time on it, I know you put in a lot of time, I know Larry's put in a lot of time, the office staff puts in a lot of times, and I really think that we need to thank Gina every time we see her for that half a million dollars, and hopefully we'll get some wisdom one day of how to actually spend it, that will make a difference.
Yes, you have to realize, we asked for 1.9 million, and we got a quarter of that, so that's part of why we're having so many problems, we didn't get it all. Anyone else for public comment? If not, we have a motion to close.
So moved to second.
Moved and seconded adjourned city council, in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.